All right, hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Bradley Gottschall, I am the Lower Paxton Township Manager, and in typical fashion, I'm going to give a brief summary of this evening's agenda, particularly for the benefit of those who may be watching at home on television. The Board this evening meets under a business session, and they have a number of action items to tend to on the agenda, including, starting first, under Chairman and Board Members' comments. We have the recognition of Central Dauphin's Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Innovations Challenge Award recipients. A number of good folks are here this evening from Central Dauphin to be recognized by the Board. After that, following, under New Business, the Board will take action to award the 2024 Township Paving Project Contract. Following that, under Subdivision and Land Development, the Board has a number of items to include action on a preliminary and final stormwater management and subdivision and lot consolidation plan, that being for the Meadows Amusement Center parking lot expansion project. Then, following, action on a final subdivision plan for Parkway Farms Phase Two. Following that, then finally, there are two resolutions, both of which are sewer planning modules, one being for the Wise Markets expansion, and then the second being for Elizabeth Village. Following that, then finally, the Board will take action on improvement guarantees, the payment of township and authority bills, hear any final announcements, and then finally, make a motion to adjourn. With all that said, members of the Board are seated and prepared to conduct business. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Lower Paxton Township Board of Supervisors' Business Meeting. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and Supervisor Navarro will lead us.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the Father of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Paul.
Good job, buddy.
At this time, we'll have the approval of the minutes from the February 13, 2024 workshop. Do I have a motion?
I so move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Before the meeting tonight, the Supervisors did meet an executive session, and we will be meeting after the meeting in executive session. Next up is public comment. If you are going to speak under public comment, all I ask is if it's something that is on the agenda tonight, that you will have the opportunity at that time to speak, you know, under public there. If not, do I have anybody that would like to speak under public comment? Sir? If you could please give us your name and your address.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Supervisors, and Neighbors. My name is Charles E. Hoak III. I live at 6131 Bluestone Avenue, Harrisburg 17112. I am here to comment on my solid waste bill, in compliance with Ordinance 21-08, comma, 165-13, which reads, and I'm not going to read Sections A and C, which is how you conduct it. I'm going to read what pertains to me out of Section B, which is the billing part.
Okay.
Section B says, "Service charges to be based on volume of waste collected." Section B, sub-paragraph two, says, "Such minimum charges will be set at a level that is appropriate to cover the basic cost of solid waste collection, but shall not be set so high as to discourage recycling of solid waste." As a single person, living alone, I do not gather a sandwich bag full of trash a week. I have a lot of recycles. When we could pay by the bag, I was paying about thirty, can't read my own writing.
That's okay.
Thirty-nine dollars a year, which was six fifty every two months. Now you're charging me four hundred and thirty-four dollars a year. First of all, because I'm living on Social Security, I don't have four hundred dollars to throw away. I have been making payments, which I have adjusted for the increase of the fee, not for four hundred and thirty-four dollars. They said that we could not pay per bag, which we have now have a big green container, which every two months, I can gather enough trash and put out that big green container. But I still do not have four hundred and thirty-four dollars worth of trash.
Mr. Hoak, I was just curious, did you switch your big container to the smallest one that we have offered, the 35 gallon?
No, it doesn't matter what size it is.
Okay.
It's, that one stays outside, so...
Okay. I'm going to let Mr. Miller, he handles the trash and the recycling, so, Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. And sir, I can certainly understand your concerns, and this was something that the Board had a lot of discussion about, because we did submit our bids to the public that included a request to have a continued bag system, and none of the parties bid on that system. This was the intent of the Board to keep the services as consistent as they were, however, none of the three haulers that bid on the project bid at all on that manual service or that per-bag service anymore. Unfortunately, that tied the Board's hand with action as far as what had to happen, which is really in line with what's going on throughout the entire state, especially in this mid-state region, with the increase in price and the automated service as a standard.
Yeah, and we did reach out to, what, sixty, seventy haulers, and out of that, we only received three bids, and they all said that any one over ten thousand dollars, or, yeah, ten thousand residents that have trash, which we have close to seventeen thousand, that we had to do the billing, they wouldn't do the billing. None of them would do bag tags, which we offered, you know, for everybody that wanted to do the bag tags, and we tried to not have the totes, but everybody is making you go with the totes now. And we did try, I mean, we tried to work with them, and no, and it's not just Lower Paxton Township, it's everywhere in Dauphin County. You know, when they're, when the contract is up, this is the new norm, that you have to have the totes, some of them aren't doing the bag tags anymore, so, you know, we talked about it, and when the bids came in, there was nothing, you know, nothing that we could do.
All that was addressed a year ago, when this first started, and there were rules set forth that you could not opt out, and there was not going to be a per-bag.
Right.
But in 165B, it does say, "For the amount of solid waste that is collected." So...
I'm going to refer to the solicitor on that, Mr. Stein.
Is that the amount of solid waste, were they talking about township-wide when we were doing the contract, or did that mean the amount per...
Per person.
When they talk, any language that says the amount of solid waste, because obviously it's not the amount that each household generates.
I was under the impression it was the amount that we were charged, based upon the total amount of solid waste that was being dumped at the...
That's what I think, because the township is charged.
Yeah, because we don't have the ability to look at seventeen thousand five hundred individual homes and say, well, yours is three pounds, yours is two pounds, yours is six pounds. The administrative cost to try and do something like that would be astronomical. So I think it's what the county charges per ton.
Yeah, I mean, the township's ordinance was written at a time during which, you know, there were a number of different opportunities for the collection of the trash, up to and including, I'd say, a free market system wherein every resident had their own hauler. We have, over the years, amended the ordinance to reflect our new collection practices. The language that was referenced this evening, you know, is not inconsistent with what our practice is. Service charges are to be based on the volume of waste collected, that is what is happening township-wide. The, you know, the hauler bills the township, and the township in turn bills each resident for providing service of trash collection, so...
And if the incinerator folks and everybody else, the destination charges the trash company.
Correct.
Trash company charges us.
So when it says the waste, it's everybody, it's not just the individual household.
Yeah, that language is kind of confusing, but that doesn't mean per household waste generated.
Yeah. Steve, is that how you would interpret it?
That's correct.
And there is a, with that language, there's a sentence towards the end of Section B that states, "At residential units, service charges shall be based on volume to the extent that any amount over the mandated containers per week be charged on a volume basis." So it clarifies that the volumetric discussion is really that beyond the container use for a property.
And you're, the point about how, you know, we do have a wide disparity of people like you who generate very little, and have to pay the same, and we have the same challenge with sewer. People, you know, you have six people in a house, and people who have one person in a house, you're billed the same, because the costs are the same. The cost to maintain all the sewer lines, it has nothing to do with how much you're actually generating, very similar to trash, since they have to go through all the blocks anyway. But we ran into that when I first got on the Board with sewer costs, and I didn't know why people were charged the same when they produce, you know, different amounts, and the explanation was, well, the lines have to go in, the cost remains the same, doesn't matter, you know, how much sewage you're producing or trash you're producing, and that's, it's not a very fulfilling explanation, but it's the best.
Yeah, and we've always had an ordinance that every homeowner must, you know, have trash.
I don't, I don't know where I want to start. I understand everything that you just said, and I'm going to start with, I have to pay four hundred dollars for something I cannot use, but Pen Waste, every one of those cans has a barcode on, and they can tell you exactly how much you're putting out every week, and who's putting it out. There have been some people online who were complaining about that, because now they are getting notified from Pen Waste that they're not allowed to do what they did, and they put it online.
Okay, so what is Pen Waste telling them that they can't do?
So, but, my point is, you were saying about everybody, you can't go to everybody and say how much you're going to use. Pen Waste can tell you how much everybody is using.
No, they can't.
No.
The barcodes are to identify that particular...
Property.
Property, in case it's stolen, in case somebody steals or takes it away. They know where it was delivered, and they know they can get an account for it by that barcode.
Okay.
That's all.
Yeah, that's what the...
Not how much is put in it, but whether it was actually there.
Yeah, when they deliver it...
It's assigned to that address, for the purpose of accountability, in case it ever shows up missing, somebody decides to take it to another location, they know which container was assigned to which address.
Yeah, when they deliver, yeah. When they delivered it, they took, I watched them when they were in our development, they scanned it, and then they put it in front of my house, and that's what it, like Mr. Zoom has said, that's what it's for. They matched the can with the address. Are we right, Mr. Miller? Okay, yeah, yeah, so there's no way that they can check, you know, check the poundage? That's what the barcode's for. So my question, I had to ask you, what are these people saying that Pen Waste is saying they can't do?
I, I did not write those problems down, and...
Okay. I was just curious, in case of something that we need to know.
Well, okay, I'm surprised that somebody doesn't check next door, because you do put information on there.
Next door is, other than a bunch of rumors, the people that are on next door come from a number of different municipalities. Every municipality has different rules and regulations, depending upon when their contract was up, and who their trash hauler is. So somebody could put something on there, it could be true, but it doesn't pertain to Susquehanna Township, or to Lower Paxton Township, but it might pertain to West Hanover Township, and that happens a lot.
And I'm not on those sites, I don't read them.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay, yeah. But if you can, if you can find out what they're saying that Pen Waste is making them do, if you could get in touch with Mr. Gottschall, we'd appreciate it.
Actually, well, I'm going to say this, I don't care about them.
Right.
Right.
I only care about my situation, and I feel that I have been in compliance with what 165-13B says about my per-waste, and I have contacted Mr. Gottschall twice, and the last time when I paid my bill, I addressed it to all the Supervisors about this, my situation.
Okay, I, I'm going to be right up front with you, we get all correspondence on Fridays in our packet, and I have never seen anything from you.
Well, I think the bottom line is, though, this is a point that's been brought up many, many times, yours is a really stark example, and it, it, it just, it pains me to hear it, between what you were paying and what you have to pay now, that you had per-bag, and then they, we couldn't secure per-bag. The two things that happened was the market collapsed, and they couldn't hire people to collect the trash anymore, so they had to jack up their salaries, and so that meant that the contract went up a lot, and then you combine that with they wouldn't do per-bag, and it hits you like a ton of bricks, and there's just really nothing satisfying that we can say, other than we tried everything we could to avoid it, and we've heard from a lot of people in the same boat, and we just couldn't, we couldn't avoid it, and there's, there's really...
Tried very, we tried very, very hard, because we sold a lot of the bag tags, but none of them, and none of them would, would work with us, and they're not working with any of the other municipalities, also with the bag tags.
Well, thank you, I guess.
Yeah, Mr. Miller, do we have a program where they can pay so much per month, instead of doing the bill every three months? Is there any way we can help out with that?
Our office staff are always willing to work with folks on payment arrangement plans that...
Okay.
...structure bill payments as needed.
Okay. So if you could contact Mr. Miller's office, they could work with you with a payment plan, if that would be a little easier for you?
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all righty.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there anybody else under public comment? Yes, sir. Your name and address, please.
Rick Sylvia, 212 Pearl Street. I'm going to talk to you briefly about Lower Paxton Fire Service. Madam Chairman, I have two documents I'd like to give to the Board, they can, we won't go working through them, but it's for something that you can work through as your leisure as to what I'm talking about, if I may approach you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there's five of us, we can share, that's okay.
That's one pack, and that man was the other pack.
Okay, so it's two different...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So there's one. Okay, you want to give that to Pamela? Okay, you and I can share.
Yeah, ma'am?
Yes.
I have been attending the Township Fire Safety Meeting every two months. I'm not here representing any fire company, although I do am a member of the Lower Paxton, oh, Linglestown Fire Company, but I'm not representing anybody, it's myself. And two incidents that happened over the last two meetings, the chief and the deputy chief have been trying to throw some ordinances down the fire company's throats, very draconian type things they want to pass, and at the last safety meeting, which I attend, which is the day after Easter, Chief Koby asked for a motion from the group, and I'll tell you about the group in a second, for a motion to pass these ordinances. And in these meetings, there are three elected fire chiefs, and three elected presidents of each company, plus the medical, our representative, and so is the police department. None, not one of these, these people wanted to make a motion for anything, and when the fire, the chief said, "I need a motion," and they said, "We didn't have time, because for some reason, this is the Easter weekend now, and each, each company has a hundred or more people, they sent the, what you're looking at now, on Thursday." And they, he asked them on Friday, Monday, right after the Easter holiday, if they wanted, that they could vote for it or not. They said, "No, we haven't had time to read it." This has been a progressive problem with these two people. Two things that happened that time. First of all, without going into the information that you have there, they wanted to vote for that, and then, and I believe the minutes are kept for all these meetings, the, both people, the fire chief, I forget the chief, and the deputy chief told, if they didn't get any answers, told them that they can't talk to anybody, "We can't talk to you, we can't talk to, we have to go through them." Now, ma'am, I'm a retired Marine, twenty-three years, I've been in two wars, and nobody is going to tell me I can't talk to my elected congressperson, nobody. That's something that really ticked me off. Now, when they said that, and they emphasized it twice, now, these meetings have minutes in it, I'm presuming that such comments are in the minutes of the, of the meeting, and both Kishiba and the deputy chief made these comments very strongly, that, that request was, of course, tabled, because they couldn't get a response. Now, the way I see it, is these six people that were the fire company are supposed to be working with the two people from, that are paid, from Lower Paxton Township. They asked both of them who actually wrote these. They had to ask them twice, because they would not answer the first time. The second time, they finally admitted that, that besides those two, the person who wrote it was the representative, the lawyer for the Policemen's Union, something to do with the police. I don't know what that person knows about firefighting, or fire ground operations, or anything like that, but somebody, and they also, I don't believe the township attorney has any knowledge of what's going on. From what I understand from gathering, from what people are talking about... From what I understand from gathering, from what people are talking about, we have, I hate to say covert, but we have something that's not quite being made to the, to the knowledge of the people who have to govern it. And I'm just, I'm just, one of the things they have in those documents is they're now calling the fire company employees. We don't get paid, we're all volunteers. I don't see how that, that could be an employee. Now, we have not had our, our union, our attorney look at this position, but these two people who are trying to shove draconian regulations against them and don't want you to see them is very concerning to me. Now, I have no idea what you know or what you don't know. Supposedly, the minutes of the safety meeting are sent to your office, but I don't know how much you read around that. But my point is, somebody needs to take control of what's going on here, and we need to get correct negotiations about what's happening, what the needs are. It sounds like they want to make it, well, let me go back. In October of last year, they presented to the board a thing to put, a program to put in the, to pay for of additional three paid deputies, deputy chiefs, and some equipment. The board turned them down flat. We are now paying for that. As you probably know, our income is from donations, and once in a while, you have a check that you send to us to give us some assistance. We were forced because of the, the past regulation they already passed, is that we had to buy a $30,000, I'm sorry, $80,000 truck for something that we neither want nor need, but we had to shovel $80,000 out to get this truck so we could work appropriately with the Township Fire Company, companies.
So let me just stop you, so
I'm done anyway.
Okay, so who, who made them purchase the $80,000 truck?
Uh, must be Kishiba and the Deputy Chief, because we had to confine ourselves to what, at that point, they did pass some regulations, orders and all that sort of thing. And I'm, and I, I'm not a negotiator with them. I am a citizen, if you will, although I am with a, with a fire company. I go to these meetings to listen to what's going on, and I'm gassed at what's going on. If, I, I suggest, strongly suggest that you invite one of the fire, fire company chiefs or the fire president to talk to you and maybe a workshop. I also invite you, the Lower, the Linglestown Fire Company has executive board meeting the first Wednesday of the month, and we have our general meeting the second Wednesday of the month at 7:30. I dare you to show up and ask questions of the people that are there, especially the two that are elected to represent us. That's all I have. Just frustrating.
Mr. Gutschall, do you know anything about an $80,000 truck? I don't think that ever came through the board, that
No.
they had to do that, so.
It didn't go through anything.
Yeah, ma'am, do you want me to start from the beginning, or just at that?
Start from the beginning.
All right.
Start from the beginning.
Yeah, I think there's some, I, I don't know if the gentleman is, has been made fully aware of, of the actual situation here of what's going on, but I'll take it back to the beginning. The, the Township had at some point, as you recall, members had completed a very lengthy, voluminous
Fire study.
thorough fire study by a consultant. That resulted really in a, a pretty broad range of recommendations that the board had to, at that point, kind of digest. And of course, doing that, you know, in the midst of everything we're trying to do, was not, was not feasible. So what we decided to do was to instead start up an implementation plan review committee, which really composed of a number of members from each of the fire companies, to include the president, the chief, and I think one other person of each, of each of those stations. This committee was then going to go ahead and go through the study, and also recommendations as made by the chief and the deputy chief, in chunks, in phases, if you will. So that way, the township could better identify what we needed to do, when we needed to do it, and, and quite frankly, how we can do it from a financial perspective and otherwise. And after each one of those phases were analyzed by this implementation plan committee, that recommendation would then go to the Public Safety Committee to formally make a recommendation to the board to either implement some of those measures or not, but in phases. So the first phase is done, we did it with the, with the chiefs, and, and now the very successful stipend program, which the board went ahead and implemented. And this next phase now is, as the gentleman had suggested, the, the ordinance and the agreement. So this is a very transparent process. A number of boards and groups of individuals have access to the system, have access to the process, and at any point of that, at any step of that process can provide comment or suggestions. The, the ordinance and the agreement that the gentleman had referenced this evening actually was provided to the fire companies back in December of 2023. And we have, sir, a letter from your then-president, Mr. DeSanto.
At that point, it was Crum. We knew, as of this year, we have a new president, which is DeSanto.
Okay.
I think, yeah, I think that's wrong. I think Crum was the fire chief. DeSanto's been the president for a long time.
Yeah, sorry.
So in December of 2023, Mr. DeSanto had provided the Township a letter actually indicating a number of his company's comments on the ordinance and agreement. So the, the notion that none of the companies had been made aware or have seen these documents is just patently false. And I think, and I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that directed towards the gentleman, I'm saying that as the concept that the, the companies hadn't seen it is inaccurate. And so, relative to this, this, these $80,000 vehicles, there was no direction by the Township to require the purchase of vehicles. That was actually something, sir, I, I would suggest you go back to your company's leadership, because actually, your company's leadership solely had been the ones to want to make those purchases. The, the other companies actually were not in favor of doing that, nor was the Township. We did not suggest doing that. And we, we, you know, frankly, that, that's, that's a company decision, and we're not, you know, privy to, to determine whether or not that's a good idea, but we did not suggest that purchase. So I, that, that's kind of where we are at the moment. And of course, during the last public safety meeting, when there was a, a failure to motion the ordinance and agreement, the director did come back to me after that meeting and said, "Hey, you know, boss, what do you want to do here?" And I said, "Give, give the committee another meeting, you know, give them the benefit of the doubt, even though they've had it since December of 2023, give them another meeting to review it and provide comments, just to make sure that we're absolutely certain here." So in June, at the upcoming public safety meeting, they're going to, again, take a look at those documents, provide comment, and, and hopefully, at that point, formally make a motion to recommend it to this body.
Ms. Chairman, may I make a comment, please? Yes, they were instituted back in '23, but there have been various ongoing negotiations with these. Some have been significantly changed. A few were, as you said, Mr. Gutschall, were implemented. The reason we have, we had to get the vehicle is that the other two fire companies already had vehicles of, of what was asked of them. And for us to stay in lockstep, if you will, with the other two fire companies, and with this chief, they now have a procedure, they have a chief, deputy chief, that we need to have somebody respond to a fire scene that is of a chief or assistant chief rank, and they have to have a vehicle with equipment in it. Because of that requirement, that we have to have a vehicle with a firefighter equipment in it, is why we had to get the vehicle. It's not because it was forced on us by the Township. It was kind of forced on us, we wanted to stay in lock sync with what they're trying to do with these regulations. So that's why we decided to get it, instead of causing more hate and discontent. But yes, they were submitted quite some time ago, but even the ones you have now are nowhere near the same, that they've been all kinds of changes. And the changes are somewhat draconian in nature. Again, I'm not negotiating this, the possibility of what's in there. The, the three fire chiefs and the three presidents are the ones who you really need to get the details of, the guts of it, because they're the ones to, I'm an innocent bystander that's pissed about telling me I can't see, talk to my folks.
Well, can I address that, sir? Because that's really why you're, you're asking, you're wanting us to do something. You want us to come to a meeting, right?
Bring them here to you.
You want, yeah, and first of all, you're, you're a volunteer with Linglestown?
Yes, that's correct, sir.
Thank you for that, and you served in the military.
That's also correct.
And thank you for that, because you know chain of command. And we try to respect that here, and we're trying to, we're forced to remake our fire protection in the township, unprecedented in the history of the township, and the size of our township and what we're doing is, the scale we're doing, it might be unprecedented in Pennsylvania. So we really got to stick with the chain of command and the protocols that are in place. I personally don't feel confident to get down in there and start, as someone who's not an expert, start to get in there and, and get my fingers on things. We're always here, and everything in the end is going to have to come through us. And I think when they made that strongly worded request that you not come to us, I think it more meant going around them and trying to get, trying to negotiate with us, which you're saying you're not doing. So I think the fear was, you're going to have everybody doing, and there's no way we could possibly get this done properly if everyone was coming at us. You know what I mean? You understand the
Yes, I understand. And my coming here, I don't expect you to really negotiate, but from everything I'm hearing, you folks don't have all the information. And that is what I'm concerned
Okay, okay. I think, I think we do, between the study, and we do get the notes, and it's, it's their, their job, the, the public safety director and the deputy fire chief, I mean, their job is to work through this with the fire companies. And I know it's, it's unprecedented, and there'd be ridiculous to think that it's going to happen without some bumps. And I want honest, honest debate, and it sounds like we're getting it. And we'll always be here, and once there's a time for us to step in and make, and we're going to vote on things, obviously, we can have more direct conversations. And of course, we're open to any communication at any time, but we know to get this done, you know, it has to be done this way, and we'll, we'll work it out.
Yeah, I just had a, I just had a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So you have the Fire and Rescue Services Cooperation Agreement, and then the ordinance. So if I'm hearing it right, you're telling me all three fire companies are not in agreement with this?
With the one that I just gave you?
Yes.
Yes, that's the one
So both of them?
I mentioned
Neither of the fire, no, all three of the fire companies are not in agreement with what you just gave me?
Right, each company has, of course, some things they agree with, but in all, in total, they don't like the way it's worded or the way regulations are put upon them. Again, I can't comment for the actual negotiators, but the mood of the fire companies right now is very negative, except the stipend was one good thing that you did, that's a very good thing. Because we have people who are out of work, and that definitely helps them, or on low income. But I just wanted to make a point that there is a problem, and you can delve it with as, as you want, because that's what you can do, but I'm letting you know it's a problem.
Okay. Well, we thank you for coming to us, and thank you for the paperwork. Thank you. Is there anybody else under public comment? Yes, name and address, please.
William Miller, 4311 Crestfield. I'll keep it very brief. I'm on a, like, a personal mission when I drive around the Township, all the fire hydrants we have, and they're kind of not painted, and the reflectors are missing. I'm, in the past, it's been the job of the Township, provide the reflector, the marker, and again, the Township has helped me out a lot. Colonial Road, we're getting the fiberglass whips on, because the mowers damaged the posts, and they fail. I have been trying my best to contact our water company, and in the past, good old Paul Weaver, "Hey, you need a gallon of paint? Here you go." I call after call after call. They said they'd call back today. I'm just hoping, they would, they provided the paint. If not, I mean, I have one other person that will help me paint. I just want to clean them up and make them look good. I weed whack, you know, Colonial, Crestfield, or Colonial and Goose Valley, that's a sightline. I melt, you drive by, I'm the guy that does it. Did it last night again.
We thank you for that.
I like doing it.
Yeah. Mr. Nolte, how many fire hydrants in the Township? Too many.
Yeah, I don't have
Did we, did we at one time paint them and make sure the reflectors were on them? Or was that always a water company thing?
Not aware that we performed any maintenance on those in the past.
No, no painting.
Okay.
But it was the reflectors, and I call Jeff and Jeff, we got, they got, they got like 20 reflectors one year, and they put them up onto, some of them there on Colonial Road. Yeah, it gets overgrown, and people that have another house, they don't seem to care. And I didn't know if we could, at some point, "Hey, you got some spray? We'll spray it." I put, I put a ring around them. I just want to get somebody from the water company to return my phone calls, and you guys have more power than I do.
Do we have any contacts, Tim?
Yeah, we do.
We do have a contact.
We can reach out
Yeah.
And try to, try to, you know, facilitate this, this maintenance.
It's their, it's a responsibility of the water company, they, you know, "Hey, when I get to it." Well, we can get to it. And just, I think everybody should be doing something like that to help out, and get it squared away. And in the parks, I ask them, and I'll, this will be it, I ask them, "Well, what about at a park, like in Linglestown, where they play baseball and so on, other communities? It has to be set up with somebody who's artistic, but to have the kids come out and paint the fire hydrants, you know, make it part of the community." But, you know, is, is some, "Well, they have to be a certain color." I, I, I'm not aware of that. You know, around here, it's red, other places, it's yellow
I've seen green ones.
lime green.
Yeah.
You know, whatever the color is, but if, if you could get the kids involved, and then you do a little, you know, you have a little hand, I just think it would be good.
Okay.
But I just don't, they're not calling me back anymore.
Okay, we'll see if Mr. Nolte can make a contact there.
I thank
And thank you for what you're doing, we appreciate it.
I want to thank Mr. Nolte for all the help. This is, he is the go-to guy. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else under public comment? Chairman and board member comments, board members? We have any comments?
I think these students have had enough civic education. I think we got to get, get to their success story.
Yeah. I've been at the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors Conference for the past three days down at Hershey, representing Lower Paxton Township. There's close to 4,000 of us there, we have tomorrow after, morning yet, and you're networking with other supervisors from all over the Commonwealth. So it's a real experience if you've never been, never been there before. Okay, recognition of Central Dolphins PennDOT Innovations Challenge Award. Mr. Nolte?
I'll actually take this one, Madam Chair, member of the board.
Oh, okay.
Yes, obviously, in the room with us this evening, is it a, a bit of an exciting group of, of young and ambitious individuals from Central Dolphin School District? Each year, PennDOT, throughout the Commonwealth, hosts this Innovations Challenge Program, wherein each district provides an opportunity for talented youngsters to, to take part and to put forward projects that kind of match with a mission of the, of the year. And, and this year, District Eight's winner, obviously, is Central Dolphin School District. And so I think without, I don't know if the, if the school, if the school district has a presentation with regard to what they actually presented or not, but if, I see, I see some, some tension in the room, so the
Wants to talk.
Let me see here, the The, this year's mission was to, where is it, where is it, where is it?
Develop an implementable plan for redeveloping a stretch of roadway that, when constructed, separated an existing neighborhood, and so on.
Perfect, sir, perfect. Yeah, so they, they did that with precision and with, with immense, you know, greatness. So, with, without further ado, we do have the, the students here, as well as the mentors of that group, and maybe we could just have them come up, introduce themselves, and kind of what they're doing with regard to their education, and yeah, that'd be tremendous.
And the project.
As they come up, yes, it was to take, develop a plan for a stretch of roadway that originally had separated existing neighborhoods, requiring people and businesses to relocate. So, they want to hear, they want to get a plan to address the needs of the community, accommodate bicycle and pedestrians, connect the separate neighborhoods, and also allowing for the smooth flow of traffic.
I'm just going to ask, was this a club that did this, or was it a class that did it? You have a spokesperson? Come to the podium. And you're also on television. If you can give us your name, please.
Yes, I'm the teacher, Cody Lize. So, this started off with our principal, Dr. Schrader, bringing this to my attention. I'm one of the tech ed teachers at Central Dolphin. And when I heard about it, I kind of took a few days to think, look into it a little bit more, because I knew nothing about it beforehand. And after getting the details, we put together a group of students. You could only have up to four, so you could have had a few less, but we got four students that were kind of hand-selected with another teacher that knew some of them. I have some in class currently. So, we got our team together, reviewed what the challenge was for this year. And we, we would meet after school, and then they would put time in, even beyond that, you know, on their own, working together, communicating together. And we came up with a presentation that we presented at the regionals. I know Lower Dolphin was part of that, and maybe some other schools, I don't know how many were involved. But we got the call back that we moved on to the state qualifier. So, now it's basically taking our presentation, which for us, we really focused on looking at what are the current bridge designs, because that's really what the challenge is about. How can we take that common traditional bridge design that's often dividing communities and not so welcoming, you know, big concrete structures? And how can we look at that maybe in a futuristic outlook? What can we do, maybe similar design without part of the guidelines where we couldn't exceed a certain cost? You know, you didn't want to say, we could go the most futuristic route, or we could make a tunnel underground. It had to be something that's viable, something that's still able to be done with the technology we currently have. So, we looked into maybe going a little bit more futuristic into possibilities of 3D printing segments in a factory, hauling them in, building them on-site, so it would allow us to create that bridge in a more timely manner, as opposed to maybe several-year project. Allow us to do it with less construction workers, so that way, you know, it's safer, less people involved, goes quicker. So, those are just a few of the key points. And then we looked into the aesthetics behind it. We looked into LED lighting, just to make it more welcoming. We looked into not only cars, but that pedestrian side, bicyclists. So, asking ourselves, what would be comfortable? I know on regular bridges, you might have a sidewalk, but oftentimes, people aren't comfortable, it's dangerous with the cars. So, we asked ourselves, how can we make it more inviting for everyone's use? How can we make it safe? How can we make it appealing to look at? Talking about adding in plants, native plants from Pennsylvania. So, those are a few things that we really focused on. And now for advancing from regionals to states, we're looking on really just getting the detail of that information, companies that can make this feasible around either the country or even the world. Where is this technology being implemented? Who's using it? Is it something that's realistic? Or is it something that's maybe a little bit too more, too advanced for our time? And how could we either scale it back or make improvements elsewhere? So, that's, that's really the scope of the project and where we're at so far.
So, it's all done, like, on the computer, electronic, digital?
Yes, yeah. We made a presentation, and we actually did do some small-scale 3D prints to show a replica. If we would have known, we should have brought a model with, so we could have showed it off, but that's what we're working on right now.
Were there any limitations on the size of the bridge? Or does the concept apply to a small bridge versus a large bridge? The same concept would apply?
So, it doesn't specify exact size, but from the way they describe the scenario, it seems like it would be more of like your highway bridge making connections. So, that's where we placed our focus, as if we're connecting a highway. But the, the main focus was that it's crossing through a community, and instead of dividing that community into two separate, how can we make it where the bridge is functional, but the communities can still thrive and interact as one?
Okay, very interesting. Would you like to introduce the young men that worked on that in one?
Yes, yes, absolutely. So, we have Alex, we have Ryan, we have Kyle, and we have AJ or Alan.
Okay. And you're, and they're all out at Central Dolphin High School?
They are, yes.
And May 1st is the state final, you know, I guess?
Yes, yes. So, May 1st, we will be meeting at, I think, the Commonwealth Academy. And it sounds like they have a pretty full day of everyone that's been accepted from each region. And we have a 15-minute presentation, we'll be judged on that. And I think we'll probably end up staying, watching a few other schools participate, get to meet some local lawmakers and some state representatives, so that will be a nice opportunity for us. But after that, I don't know exactly how long to know, you know, who, who wins it or not, but that's kind of the timeline there.
Wow. Well, congratulations, we're glad to have you here tonight, and good luck, good luck.
Have fun, take pictures, and good luck.
Yeah. So, what we'd like to do right now is if we could come down in front, and you, your teacher could come up, we'd like to get a picture, then that way you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting, if that would be okay? I mean, you're, you're more than welcome to stay if you want to.
Yeah, that breaks your heart, but we understand.
I think that they should, I think they need to stay.
You think they should stay?
And the township engineer's here, so he can pick his brain, just saying.
Are you guys seniors, juniors?
Sophomore.
Oh. Wow, awesome, great.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you get to do it again next year, great.
Yeah. Get some picture.
I'm not dressed.
I have to stand sideways.
Sideways, real close.
Good luck, guys.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good job.
Good job.
Good job.
Good job.
Good job.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good job.
Good job.
Good job.
Good job.
Good job.
Good job.
Good luck.
Thank you, Mary, good luck.
Good luck.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
That's what I told him.
He gets that a lot.
I'll be annoying him now, but he'll enjoy it, he'll appreciate it years down the road.
Okay. Managers report. Mr. Gutschall?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have no official report this evening.
Best one you had all year.
Thank you, sir.
No old business, new business, action to award the 2024 Township Paving Project contract. Who's handling it? Mr. Nolt or Mr. Gutschall?
I'm going to take this one.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Bids were opened on April 2nd for the township's 2024 paving project. We received a total of three bids, with New Enterprise, Stone and Lime submitting the low bid. We have funds budgeted in our state aid budget sufficient to award the base bid and alternates one and two for a total contract amount of $1,020,0331.20. Just a note that New Enterprise did perform the township's 2023 paving project, and we were really happy with the results and happy with their work. The, you'll notice on alternate one, that Susquehanna Township will be contributing funds for a portion of this work. Their Board of Commissioners met last week and approved this, this portion of paving on Francis Drive and Sumner Drive, so that we could pave those entire areas and not stop at the township boundary. Brad, if you can pull the, the map up here. So, this, this map, this insert shows the four paving areas that we have this year. And this map went out last week with a letter to approximately 200 households that are on these streets that will be impacted by the project. And those residents, there's a QR code here at the bottom. They can use this QR code to open a, a GIS application that we call Pavement Pulse. This is something that our GIS intern put together for us, that essentially lets the, the residents communicate with the township, and the township communicate with the residents before, during, after construction. So, just wanted to share that, that tool with the board and, and let them know that this, this also went out to residents. So, with that, we recommend the board take action here tonight to award the contract to New Enterprise, Stone and Lime. Can I answer any questions you might have? And Jason Hines is also here, and their recommendation letter is, is in your, your packet as well.
Mr. Nolt, do you know after, if this is passed here tonight, do you know when they would be starting that project?
We reached out to New Enterprise last week, and they indicated that sometime in May, they would probably get started, so a little bit earlier than they did last year.
Okay. So, everything's done back there, the water, the stormwater?
On Francis, yeah, yeah. The, the sewer department is finishing up work on 67th Street, Chateau, and then they have some minor repairs to make up in area number, let's see, I think it's, yeah, it'd be area number two, up on Regal Road, some stormwater repairs.
Okay. Do I have any questions from the board for Mr. Nolt?
This is 2.42 miles total?
Yeah, that's correct.
15 streets. People are always asking, we had it last week, people want to know where they're at.
You know, well over 400,000 per mile at this point, so.
So, that's, that's what a million dollars gets you.
Yep.
So, Tim, we're, we're recommending approval of a million 20,331.20, and not the 1,233,315, which looks to me like a total?
That was the engineer's probable cost.
Yeah, that's what they were looking, so they came in under.
So, we, the bids we received, the bid we received came in 212,983 under the engineer's estimate, which is, is, we're happy with that result.
Yep, thank you.
Hey, do I have a motion to award New...
Oh, we have a question here, Robyn.
Oh, I'm sorry, panel, okay.
Mr. Nolt, could you just explain a little more about two and a half miles? We're paying a million three for two and a half miles of paving? Could you just elaborate a little bit, a little bit more on that, please?
Sure. So, essentially, with, with the budget that we have, we don't rebuild roads. This is essentially for some mill and overlay. So, we're going to take like an inch and a half off the road and put an inch and a half of, of new wearing course over top. Many locations, we have, and we work with HRG to identify areas that need what we call base repair. So, we'll have up to, you know, three to five inches of material in those locations cut out and, and basically restored before the top coat is put on.
And you said a mile is a little over 400,000?
Yeah, this year, it's 422,000.
So, each mile plus .5, that adds up? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you have any other questions?
No. I'll take this up in executive session. We are on that 2.42. I can walk to my house in 2.42.
Okay, well, you know, that's why Mr. Nolt's here, if you would like to ask him.
Yeah, are you saying you can't, you can't understand why it costs that much, or?
For two and a half miles.
Very expensive to pay roads.
Yeah, this is, this is essentially what we've been paying and what we do pay. We have a third party that performs the paving, and we pay them prevailing wage. So, it's, you know, these are large companies that, that work on large projects.
You got three bids, and this was the cheapest?
Yeah.
And you're only doing patching?
No.
No. Essentially, the whole road will be addressed. What I'm saying is they're not, like we do on some of our sewer projects, we're not tearing out the entire road and starting from scratch on these. We just don't have money budgeted to do that.
So, just taking a few inches?
Yeah, you're doing some milling and taking it down, then they have to replace that. It's very expensive to do roads.
And I'll be honest, I was always told it was a million dollars a mile, but that probably is what you were initially, what you're saying. This is rebuild. I mean, this is not rebuild. Rebuild is a million dollars a mile. We're just, we're just going to lay down another couple of inches of, of that. That's why we're getting two. So, that's actually, we're getting more than what, you know, we're getting two miles because we're only putting down a couple of inches rather than rebuilding the entire thing. But every year, we go and, you know, as a township, try and do, what is that, 10 miles of, or, or is it less than that? What is, what is the...
We go just based off our budget. Here's the budget we can do, and this is how many miles it gets us.
But in the past, I mean, we've been trying to, to do as much as we, as we can. I think, my point is that, you know, this is two miles, doesn't seem like a lot, but we try to shoot for, you know.
It's just, it's just expensive? You know, the asphalt, the milling?
Well, does 10 miles include sewer work?
Yeah, and that, that figure's honestly a little high. Probably closer to, to five total.
And the, and this work is funded by the Pennsylvania Liquid Fuels Tax, which, the amount of which we don't control is, that's just, what is that based on? Is that, is the gas tax in there?
Yeah, it's based on our population, as well as the, the miles, miles of road in our system.
So, the state collects the tax and distributes it based on what you just said. And the gasoline tax, with the rise of electric vehicles, the actual revenue from the gasoline tax is going down. And that's something that the state's looking at, but this is where, you know, in the end, this is where we get the money to pave our roads.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but do you know how much liquid fuels we're going to approximately get for the year?
I could get that for you, if you'd like the exact figure.
Yeah, while Tim's looking up the, the numbers there, I'll, I'll just add that similar to what Supervisor Navarro mentioned, that the standard kind of has been about a million dollars per mile, as, as a general rule of thumb. I will note that there are some other ancillary items included in the contract, such as upgrading curb ramps for handicapped... And the gasoline tax, with the rise of electric vehicles, the actual revenue from the gasoline tax is going down. And that's something that the state's looking at. But this is where, you know, in the end, this is where we get the money to pave our roads.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but do you know how much liquid fuels we're going to approximately get for the year?
I could get that for you if you'd like the exact figure.
Yeah, while Tim's looking up the the numbers there, I'll just add that similar to what Supervisor Navarro mentioned, the standard kind of has been about a million dollars per mile as a general rule of thumb. I will note that there are some other ancillary items included in the contract, such as upgrading curb ramps for handicap accessibility along sidewalks where we're doing the paving, as well as having to adjust some sewer manholes that are located along these streets. So it's not just straight $1.02 million for asphalt. There are some other ancillary items that are needed to complete the project responsibly.
You're doing the milling, you're doing the pay in the prevailing wage, and, you know, lifting some of the old up. Yeah, it all, it all adds up.
Do we set our paving schedule and projects after we find out how much liquid fuels tax we're getting?
No. No, we come up with estimates based on prior year allocation.
I guess. It's not going to vary that much.
Yeah, and the liquid fuels budget is, the state aid budget is used also for, you know, like we talked about last week, for salt. So there's a lot of variability from one year to the next as to how much of that money we will actually spend.
And we talked about this last week, so I'm going to talk about it now, because you guys weren't here necessarily. But the the reason that these were picked was from the driving around, the other studies that are done based on rating our roads and grading them, you know, to see which are, which ones need to be done first. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. We did a road botic scan summer 2023, and these are, essentially, the bulk of these are in the top 50 worst roads in the township. There's, there's 67th Street is number 6. T Road in Area 2 is number 7. So it's, you know, let's say Bradford Road was was selected. Maybe that's not in the top 50, but T Road is number 7. So it's, it's trying to get the 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 best pricing we can get without having the contractor go from one road. You know, we could send them all over the township, and it's just not cost effective.
Yeah, thanks for explaining that, because that's actually useful information for me. Because, I mean, that makes sense. I can understand that, that you're trying to hit that that road that was in the top 50, but also not spend $3 million in doing 2 miles. Gotcha.
Okay.
So our allocation for liquid fuels, just to answer that, was about 1.63 million.
And look what 2.5 miles are costing.
Yeah.
Yeah, so good. Well, thank you. Is there any other questions? Any questions from the audience? With that said, could I have a motion to award to New Enterprise Stone and Lime Company in the amount of $1,020,331.20?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hines and Mr. Nold. Appreciate it. Brady, Subdivision and Land Development, action on a preliminary final stormwater management and subdivision lot consolidation plan for the Meadows Amusement Center Parking Lot Expansion Plan, number 24-02. Mrs. Erby?
Yes, good evening. This is the parking lot expansion for the Meadows Amusement Center, and it proposes to subdivide land from 9 Care Street and convey that land to condo unit 2. The lot addition will allow for 10 additional parking spaces and an underground stormwater facility to be constructed solely on condo unit 2. 9 Care Street has a total area of 25,669 square feet, and of that, 13,624 square feet will be subdivided from the lot and combined with condo unit 2. Condo unit 2 has a total area of 41,736 square feet and will be increased to 55,022 square feet, while 9 Care Street will be reduced to a total area of 12,045 square feet. The site is located in the Commercial General Zoning District, and the plan was approved at the April 3rd, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting. There were two waiver requests for stormwater management, and staff recommends approval of both of those waivers. There were four zoning variances for this plan, two, and one special exception. There are only three administrative comments and two general comments for this plan for you tonight. And if the board has any questions, there is a representative from KNW here.
Okay. Are they meeting all of the administrative and with staff?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Yes, would you like to introduce yourself?
I'm William Pompey with KNW Engineers. So, yeah, we were requesting approval for the-
Is your mic on, sir?
I think so.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, just speaking.
Sorry. Again, my name is William Pompey with KNW Engineers. We're looking for approval for the subdivision lot consolidation plan and the 10 additional parking spaces with the stormwater. Ultimately, what we're doing for this plan is subdividing a larger piece off of the 9 Care Street, which was for residential use. That piece would be then consolidated into the unit 2 piece, which would be part of the miniature golf batting cages and the ice cream shop that's currently there right now. The 10 additional spaces will be used for the ice cream, batting cages, and miniature golf. The owner definitely needs those parking spaces, so that's what this, the project was for. That would allow the parking to come off of Care Street and stay within the property itself. Again, we provided underground stormwater. We've addressed all the comments. I think there was only a couple of new ones, because we had, we did submit this last week, but we've addressed everything else up to this point, so.
Is that where the the house that had burned down? Is that, is that where it is, Amanda? Where they're going to be adding the, behind the, was it called MISO or whatever?
MISO?
MISO?
No, the parking spaces are actually going to be over top of the existing, there's an existing stormwater pond right there now. And basically, we're putting in a different type of underground stormwater chamber system, and then we're going to pave over top of that.
Okay.
So it's between, the parking lot is between the batting cages and the street.
Okay.
The owner has indicated that if it does come, if he can acquire that piece of property where the house is, because I guess it's been vacant or whatever shape it is now, he would like to acquire that and possibly put additional parking there eventually if it works out finance, finance-wise for him, so.
Okay.
So, so he's doing this because business is good then, I guess? Not because of ordinances with parking or something like that?
Correct. Business is good, and he does have trouble finding parking. He currently leases a little bit of parking for the, behind him. And I guess that building's up for sale, so he's just was trying to find additional spaces. And that was, this is, I guess, not easiest, but this is the most common sense approach at this time.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions, board members? Anybody from the public? No? Okay. Do I have action to, on a preliminary final stormwater management and subdivision consolidation plan for the Meadows Amusement Center Parking Lot Expansion Plan, number 24-02?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Action on a final subdivision plan for, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Got ahead of myself there. Action on a final subdivision plan for Parkway Farms Phase 2, Plan 24-04, for Mrs. Erby?
Yes, the final subdivision plan for Parkway Farms Phase 2 consists of 17 dwelling lots and three open space lots to be developed in accordance with the plan. The site is in the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District with the open space development overlay. Public streets will be offered for dedication to the township, and the site will be served by public water and sewer. The plan was approved at the April 3rd, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting. This plan comes before the board tonight with five administrative comments and only four general comments. And I believe Mr. Joel McNaughton is here. If the board has any questions, to address to him.
Okay. Joel, did you want to come up?
Sure.
Want to introduce yourself, please?
Sure. Good evening, Joel McNaughton, here tonight on behalf of Parkway Farms Associates, which is the owner of the property in question. This is the second phase of a project known as Parkway Farms, which is located north of Lingelstown Road, along the extension of Continental Drive. The preliminary plan was approved, I guess, in probably around 2022. We came in last year with approval of the first phase final. The improvements for Phase 1 final are complete, and construction of the houses is underway. The market has been pretty strong, so we expect to complete the site improvements to this phase, Phase 2, by the fall, and really be probably complete with all construction in 2025. So, pretty quick, 48 houses in about, you know, 18 months or so, which is kind of the pace that this township's been on these days. We have received and understand all the comments. I think our engineer and your engineer have been in contact, and if they're not already addressed, they they will be prior to recording.
Okay, that was going to be my question. The board members have any comments? No comments? Okay. So do I have a motion for, to approve the final subdivision plan for Parkway Farms Phase 2, Plan number 24-04?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. The next item is action to adopt Resolution 2024-08 Sewer Planning Module for Wise Markets. Says Mr. Gutschal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. As this board is now pretty routinely familiar, from time to time, this board must take action to approve sewage planning modules in conjunction with previously approved subdivision plans. Wise, as you are aware, has already been approved by the board, and this sewer planning module would essentially just allow the sewer system to increase to the degree that it would meet the capacity of the new, of the new, the new plan. So this resolution before the board has been reviewed by staff and the engineer and is prepared for board action at this time.
Any questions from the board? Questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-08 Sewer Planning Module for Wise Markets?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda, action to adopt Resolution 2024-09 Sewer Planning Module for Elizabeth Village. Mr. Gutschal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, same thing. This this resolution also does the same, except with the, with the exception of it being for Elizabeth Village. And so again, staff and the engineer have reviewed this resolution and this module, and it is before the board this evening for adoption.
Any questions from the board members? Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-09 Sewer Planning Module for Elizabeth Village?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we go down to the improvement guarantees, which I'm pretty sure there are 12 of them.
Bunch.
We have Deven Woods, Autumn Ridge, Phase 2 and 3, Huntley, Phase 1, Maiden Creek, Mindy Meadows, Phase 2, Autumn Oaks, Phase 1, Shiny Shell Car Wash, BRV, CDE, which is CD East Athletic Field, 763 North 67th Street, 1951 Parkway West, Autumn Ridge, Phase 4, Sheet Store, Number 412. Any questions from the board on the improvement guarantees? Do I have a motion to approve the improvement guarantees?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Payment of bills. Do I have a motion to pay the bills of the Lower Paxton Township and Lower Paxton Township Authority?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have announcements. We will not be meeting next week. We will be meeting the first Tuesday in May. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming.